To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure we know who everybody is tonight?
I think so.
Addition or deletion?
Online, we have Martha and Bob, Frank and Deb.
And Deb?
And Deb.
Okay, great.
Addition, so Mark Fitzgerald from, he's a representative of the Rutland ATV Club, has requested to join. No, I don't see them here yet, but at some point.
Yeah, okay. Approval of the minute?
They look fine. I'll move that we approve minutes.
I'll second it.
John will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. And then announcements?
Nothing.
Do you have a report from a zoning administrator tonight?
Sorry, I haven't been around. In any event, I have two alleged zoning violations, discrepancies. They're different from what they, they built something different than what was for them. I'm going to have to follow up on those. I didn't have time last week. And I have two pending applications that I'll take care of tomorrow. That's it.
Do you have a planning commission?
I didn't send in an email one, but yes, we did meet last Monday. And I'll, I'll send in a report sometime this week. But we continued last week to work on the, the bylaw modernization grant with Ed Bove from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And we went over a bunch of updates that he has flagged in the bylaws, primarily things that make it difficult for people to do stuff with their property, like setbacks that are, that, you know, like 40-foot setbacks and things like 20% or 30% lot coverage is the maximum. And a number of, there's a couple just really weird things that are in our bylaws that we're like, why is that there? We don't know. So he flagged a bunch of things and we just kind of went through it. And we're like, yep, let's, let's sort these out. Let's figure it out. So our plan is next month, the Planning Commission is going to meet half an hour early. And we're going to, instead of having our usual meeting, we're going to do a little walk-through of Paulette Village Center just to sort of look at the sizes of properties, the setbacks, just to like see what's here as we go into making this bylaw update. So that largely what we want to do is reduce as many, oh Jonas, what are they called? The discrepancies? There's an official name for them. Yeah. Basically, we want to reduce as many properties that are...
Oh, non-conforming.
Yeah, non-conforming properties. We would love it if there were fewer non-conforming properties because we made the zoning bylaws fit with what's already in the, in the village. So we're going to do that. We're going to walk through the Village Center in Paulette. There's going to, in future, be a West Paulette walk-through that's going to have to do with the municipal planning grant. And when that happens, the Planning Commission will probably join in and do that walk-through as well, just to go through the West Paulette Village Center. So yeah, I think that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Anything from Keith?
Yes. So I forwarded it, forwarded it to you all via email. But ongoing work planning, number one, the grant was declined on the Quarry fill project. So I'm pursuing other funding options, but have not yet had any luck on that. I heard from Patrick Wilson, just a little addendum on that. And they were only able to fund three projects this year in the whole state. So he was really sorry that ours couldn't be one of them. But, so we need to revisit potential funding for that. Two, for grants and aid, we rolled the Kelly Hill project forward to this year. That was the one last year that we never got to completing. So Keith spoke with Stephanie Bork today. And so there's no need for a pre-construction site visit. However, so we're all set with that. She did follow up with an email and there's some information that Keith has to review and make sure that the plan is still relevant because there are, there is some opportunity to get reimbursed for funding for, I think, different materials that weren't eligible last year, had we done the project. So she just wants to be sure that we review that and everything still looks good before we move ahead. So I can also forward that email to everyone so that you can all review that as well. Paving this year is a huge question mark with the fuel prices being so volatile. I will keep in touch with Tom Fuller and see what develops. We have some tree work that needs doing. And I am talking to local tree, to a local tree crew to get some idea of pricing. And please reach out with any further questions or concerns. And he also gave me all of the information for the Harriet Brook Road, Better Back Roads grant, so we can get that all closed out. So Julie has all that. And she's going to work on finalizing all those numbers. And then her and I will get together and make sure everything looks good. And we'll get that submitted hopefully, if not end of this week, early next. So that's good.
Sounds good.
The paving grant is the other outstanding grant that needs paperwork completion. And Keith is aware of that. And that's the next kind of thing looking ahead for him to do, so.
I haven't heard anything about prices of fuel. I can't, I can't imagine with the fuel, as ridiculous as it is, how, what a huge height paving will take, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything from the assessors, John?
I haven't had any contact.
Town clerk's memo?
Deb is here, but also, so I don't know if there's anything else, Deb, that you wanted to add?
No. Basically, well, the only thing that's kind of going on in my office right now is this is the time for our state representative to submit a petition and a consent form to be on the ballot. And I think they have to fill, I think I have to look at the date. But anyway, no petitions have been submitted for the Rutland Bennington District, which is our district. We will be getting our new tabulator soon. And Sue and I are scheduled to go to a training for that. If any of you are interested in doing that with us, we might be able to have one more, but I'm not sure. But we're also going to follow up with onsite training for all of the BCA members that would be interested in seeing how the machine's going to work. Because this will be a new, a new machine. It's from the same company, but it's a new tabulator. So I think it would be good if anybody was available to come and see it when we demonstrated it onsite, not necessarily at the training, but onsite. So anyway, that's about it. Listen, if there's any questions.
What is the double machine here that Deb?
The small ballot box is going to be removed. Those are the, those are the holders for the tabulator machine. The bigger box is the new housing for the tabulator. So like what we do is we take the tabulator and we slide it onto the ballot box and lock it. And then the ballots drop down into the box when it goes to the tabulator. So the bigger box there is the housing for the tabulator, but we have not gotten that yet. And the other box is just going to be removed, taken out of the town hall.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you, John.
Is that anybody else have anything for Deb? I think that's it, Deb.
Thank you very much, Deb.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I showed this up before, but Mike and I talked about a scanner for ARPA funds to look at scanning all the permits so we could do a good database. But I haven't had a chance to look at it. I did talk to Deb and see what she had. Did talk to Deb to see what she had. So anyway, but I haven't researched any.
Okay, that's all. I know we talked about that. So we could scan them in and then get them in the computer so we can, we have a much better tracking system.
Absolutely.
And that's ARPA, something that they would definitely...
Definitely, definitely.
So I'll look at it.
See what Deb has and see others, you know, anybody else that you may know that have a particular... I could check if you, if you don't find anything, and anybody says, oh, this is a great one, you can let me know and I can, I can ask the IT guy at work.
That'd be great. I talked to the town clerk in Castle. She showed me what she has. She bought, she bought hers with a, with a purchase in mother's terms. But that was quite some time ago. She said the technology is improved a bit, clarity and...
Deb has a hand raised.
Deb, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Jonas, I'll be in the office tomorrow.
Okay.
And you can tell me what the intent is for that. You know, is it going to go into a centralized, are the zoning permits going to go into a centralized file where people can access them?
Well, I would hope that, you know, people can access them on the computer into your office.
Okay, because the zoning permits right now get scanned into the COT system.
Right. But what I have to do...
With the land that is.
Okay, so can they do it, a database, alphabetized and all that? I mean, I could, I could, I mean, I got to go backwards. I got to go...
Yeah.
I need to scan.
We, we can, we can chat about that.
Because right now it's a hunt as heck, you know? So I got to go through each year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, great.
I'll scan tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Yep.
Town treasurer's memo?
So from Julie, there are two warrants this week. Payroll for the period was $8,947.71. Accounts payable was $77,891.03. General fund money is $70,064.96. Highway, $16,394. Wastewater, $472.84. Included in the general fund expenses is the final payment to the Meadow East School District. Stormwater municipal roads permit is coming due $1,350. I can pay online with a credit card with your approval. In April, we received from the state of Vermont, the quarterly highway state aid for $27,344.83. This includes Class 2 and 3 roads and the supplement in lieu of Better Back Roads grants. We also received $4,050 towards the bylaw modernization grant. And lastly, we have received another wastewater permit from the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. So three motions being requested this evening. One for payroll warrant, 22065, for $8,947.71. A motion to approve the accounts payable warrant for two, number 22066, I think it probably is, for $77,891.03. And another motion with some discussion to authorize a permit payment online for 1,350 dollars with the town credit card. And that's submitted by Julie.
Excellent. Anybody want to make the motion that we pay those three?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I guess we can roll them all into one, that we pay the payroll warrant and the accounts payable warrant and authorize the online permit payment with the town credit card.
Second's that? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Here's a copy of the invoices, if anybody's looking for them.
Oh, and I guess to piggyback on the town treasurer's memo, I'll just report that with, with the information that Julie gave me, I submitted our first yearly ARPA funds documentation to the US Treasury. That was due by April 30th. And I got taken care of and Julie has also got all that information, so.
That was a quarterly report for ARPA funds?
The yearly report.
Okay.
Because we are a small municipality, we only need to do the yearly report.
Nice, okay. Okay.
Okay. Anything else for the treasurer? Emergency management director?
Nothing from Bob, but Jennifer submitted a health, a town health officer report. Since the last report, there has been a report of one dog bite and no additional follow-up has been required. But town health officer received that report.
Wastewater facility?
I never saw it.
Haven't heard, haven't heard anything.
I haven't received any emails.
I did. I talked to the, the new trainee yesterday. I was in the hardware store. And she said everything's going all right and just got the basics all down. She said, I'm still not going to know what to do when something different happens. But I said, well, that's what Jill's for. But she's, she says it's just going good. So that's very positive. And other than that, I didn't hear any more from Jill. They were talking last, the last meeting I came through, that check valve was leaking a little bit in the village. And she was noticing high flows and spruce gum. So she's going to try and get the camera back in there to see, make sure we don't have any breach and where we're getting surface water and again, like we did last fall. So that's one thing that we got cooking right now, and that's about it. Do you have any, anything on the facilities report?
Yeah, I do. I, I did end up meeting up with Matt Levitt. I guess it was last Friday. And about his experience at the library, snow. And he says it's going pretty good in that he was originally hired to shovel off the ramp by the previous library director. And apparently there's discussions between, or differences of opinion about running the back heater in the, on the ramp. And that the new library director doesn't feel that it's as costly as the previous one did. So which ends up meaning they're, they're running it more often. And so that isn't a problem on the ramp, okay? The main problem is up on the upper doorway, which there's no difference of opinion as far as that was too small, as far as getting around the door. And, but compounding that is, there's quite a, what do you call it? Where two things come together, valley. Valley collects a large amount of snow. And there's no way, because there isn't any heater there. And that is a problem and is dangerous for Keith, Matt, and anyone. So that's a concern. And although he was originally hired to do the, the back, the ramp shovel, he ends up doing the front steps as, as well. So, so I guess that's, that's kind of his report. And, but he thinks it's, things are working okay. And he goes through, he does the snow piling at the school too. And I don't know where he has other clients, but...
Okay, so that's all good. Nice.
That's a little more information.
Anybody got back to you?
No.
No?
And I'm told that proceed in a different direction there. I was contacted by Kim Ayers, a delinquent tax collector. She is preparing, she has a tax sale scheduled for May 18th at 12, I assume 12:00 PM. And wanted to see if someone from the select board can be there to represent the select board.
Which day is it?
What day did you say?
May the 18th at 12 noon. And it would only be for the, the one, the Stanley Peterson property.
That'd be here.
Correct.
Oh, look.
Will you, will you go to it, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that's...
Do we need to make a formal motion to authorize you to purchase that in the event that there's no...
You probably should.
Yeah.
If I can do it. I've got some other town business that...
The motion?
Okay.
I'll second it.
John will bid it in if should there be no other bidder.
Should we, should the motion state that a, the select board is authorizing a select board representative in the event that John isn't able to make it and it needs to be somebody else, or?
It's fine with me.
Yeah.
That's, you know, nitpicky, but...
Just, just, right, just in case we got a cover. So last time, last time, it, it ended up being Quikly and John and I talked and I think Bob or somebody else, we, we had a quorum and decided that John should go, but he didn't have to buy it. But, but we found out that in the event that no one is there, that just drags the whole process on much longer.
Right, right. And it's also a lesson that Kevin O'Toole has found out about the 153 property that we need to, it's got to be a certain way warned versus the option, the auction. To give that authority, or to give that warning, right? Oh, I was talking to Julie. She was here earlier. In that we won't be able to get any tax revenue from that property. While we will be able to get sewer and sewer tax.
We will never be able to get any tax revenue from the taxes?
For this coming year.
Oh, for the coming year.
Yes. Just the way it was warned needed to be. Because the sale of it happened after April 1st, I think. Anyway, she's been discussing, or Kevin O'Neal has been discussing that in that if we do another auction type thing, we should discuss Kevin O'Neal. I'm getting everything wrong. Kevin O'Toole.
Yeah. Discuss the proper procedures.
Proper procedures. So of course the calendar makes a difference too.
So the April 1st is a critical...
Okay, so do we, do we vote us all in favor, right, of that, John? Or in the event that John is unavailable, someone, a select board representative?
Select board member, I said.
To purchase, okay. So we got that under control. Okay, older unfinished business is...
So we have the pedestrian, discussion on the pedestrian accessibility scoping study. And I guess what I will add on is that we received an email from Devin Neary, who is looking for what the select board's decision is going to be. And I believe that's because, the reason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the reason for the request for a swift decision is because of the upcoming deadline for the grant.
Yeah, I believe that was the case.
Yes. And then also, the select board received two emails from members of the public, which I had forwarded along to all of you with feedback. But that was, those were the only two, only two emails that I received.
So I, I looked over the information about, that actually Sarah had copied. Because I, I couldn't see the, the screen and, because I joined the meeting via Zoom. And I don't, I didn't, I looked at it quick during lunch. So I didn't really gather the difference between proposal two and proposal three, other than there's a lot more money.
The real only difference is that proposal three takes it all, sidewalk all the way down to Sheldon Store.
Okay.
And the proposal two only takes the sidewalk. Do you remember whose house it was in front of, John?
I think Andrew Keela, or this, I think it only takes the sidewalk up to where it...
There's a wall there.
Currently goes, like that slate wall that, where Andrew Keela bought that place. I think it just kind of...
It's the old Hattie'sman House.
Goes up to there. And then I don't think, in the third one, I also don't think it comes all the way down here to the library.
I think it did.
Did it?
I think it did come all the way down.
So basically, it's just a less footage of sidewalk?
Yeah.
Sidewalk and walkway.
But I, I think the takeaway that I got from the meeting is that there are these three alternatives that were presented. But no matter which way that the town decides to go, there's an understanding that it, whichever alternative the town selects, if any, it would, it could be a prolonged process. Like it doesn't all have to be done.
It would almost have to be.
Have to be, because the grant funding would be 80/20. And the nice thing about it is that the, Devin Neary at Rutland Regional Planning Commission has volunteered to write the grant for the town, which is very, very valuable.
Yes, that's very helpful.
So that, that was that. So I think that, that was the big thing, a big point that I remembered too, that it's, you know, no matter what the town decides, it doesn't have to all happen. It probably, it won't all happen.
Right.
Yeah.
And the two letters we got were in support of option three.
The full, yeah.
The sidewalks all the way.
And honestly, my thought is whether we were to select option two or option three, the part that Devin will write the grant for this year is probably going to be the crosswalks across 30 and across 133.
Right.
The sidewalk, and we can talk to Devin about this too. The sidewalk to the church, right, to the church parking lot, which seems important.
And the two signs.
Yeah. And this, and the work right down here in the Village Center, right? That would be, probably be what would be in the first, in the first bit that, that we could get the money for.
Yeah.
So one of the things too, that I didn't quite gather, with putting the sidewalks in proposal two or three, would that eliminate the parking in front of Max?
It would eliminate the diagonal parking. There was some discussion about whether there could still be parallel parking in front of Max. And I think the conclusion that was come to was that there could probably be parallel parking in front of Max. But if they parallel parked plus the sidewalk, it would stick out nearly as much as the diagonal parking does right now. So, and the...
Yeah, and I think that it would eliminate parking that is technically not, it's, it would eliminate parking spaces that currently, as they stand, they're unpermitted. So the only parking that would be eliminated is parking that technically isn't, you know?
Is illegal anyway.
Illegal, it's illegal parking anyway. So the fact of the matter is that yes, it would take away parking, but...
So I have to say, as I was driving in just before seven tonight, and I came past, there were like three or four people parked diagonally in front of Max. Their side lot was empty. That little lot to the left of Max, there was one car in it. They could have all parked there. It wouldn't have been a problem. They just, it's convenient, so people pull up, you know? But yeah. And also this parking lot across the street was also empty. So there's usually parking if someone is willing to walk a couple more steps.
Right. I think the concern was accessibility, like having, you know, access, close accessible parking. But, you know, I think there are, there are also always solutions. I mean, having a handy... I mean, having a handy, a parent who has accessibility issues, you know, she gets dropped off out front of every door and then somebody goes around and parks, you know? So it's, there are, there are solutions to every problem. But the other point that came up, which I also thought was valuable from in this meeting, a lot of the community feedback was talking about enforcement of speed through town and also people were concerned about sightlines and other topics that weren't really under, were valid, good and valid topics, but really weren't under the umbrella of this scoping study. So I do think that that's just something for the Select Board to continue to think about is like, there are sightline scoping studies which could be done, you know, as well, you know? So there, that was something that I think is important to think about. It would be separate, but similar situation.
So how does everybody feel? Harley?
So I remember the overall budgets for the different options, but I can't remember what Devin was saying about what the first tranche or first phase amount would be. Is it in the order of a half a million?
I think it was, I may have my notes here from that meeting. Yeah, it would be an 80/20 match. The maximum that he's ever seen anyone get is a three quarters of a million. But the grants are, for the Bike and Ped Program, the grant is due June the 8th. And they tend to give out around half a million. And I think the number for the Option 3 was something like one and three quarters million. 1.75, yeah. So that would have to be done in at least three steps, maybe four.
And just a follow-up comment. What was described as being part of that Phase 1 seemed like the most important and biggest bang for the buck of, of the overall full Option 3. The crosswalks, the warning signs.
I have the, the evaluation matrix pulled up from the presentation. So Alternative 1 is no build at all. So that's free, that's $0. Alternative 2 with an asphalt sidewalk would be 1 million. Alternative 2 with a concrete sidewalk is 1.25 million. Alternative 3 with an asphalt sidewalk is 1.4 and Alternative 3 with extended concrete is 1.75.
And they didn't recommend the asphalt.
Right.
And if we're going with it, I don't see why they would do the asphalt, honestly.
So really you're either looking at 1.25 or 1.75 are the, the Alternative 2 or Alternative 3. That's total. But they, I think that Nicole even said, you know, the first year funding could even be as simple as just putting in a crosswalk and the two flashing signs. You know, which is, I think they said each flashing sign is, was like 25,000 or 20,000.
15, I think.
Something. So I think, you know, financially that's just...
I think a crosswalk and a flashing sign would certainly have an effect on the traffic through there. Just as the little blinky signs in West Pollock Village catches your eye and you pay attention.
And then, and the sense I got from the presentation was that once we do even this first step of some sidewalks, like across the bridge and the blinking sign, then was it that Vtrans might be willing to reconsider our speed. Like they know, once we've done something to the intersection, they might look again at the speed limit.
Martha and Bob have a hand raised virtually when you're ready for comment.
Martha and Bob, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Chairman, Peter and all. I wanted to make two comments and actually Jessica just covered my first comment. That, that was important. What I got out of that meeting was that Vtrans won't do anything to help Pollock slow the speed down on Route 30 until we have done something like these proposals for pedestrian crossings. So I'm just repeating you, Jessica, but I think that was an important point from the, from the meeting last, on April 26th. My second point or concern is that there weren't very many people at the meeting on April 26th. So I'm just wondering how, how, how you could inform the community more about this whole project. I don't know how the meeting was publicized, but I was very surprised that there weren't more residents of the village at the meeting.
Yeah, there were more people at the one in December.
Quite a bit more.
And yet the publications were the same. We warrant the meeting and all the normal spots and... So one of the, also the things that I, that I heard Nicole, right, Cecily, say that when you start to define the sidewalks and stuff like that, as the traffic comes into town, it looks like it's a restricted area and you naturally slow down more. That made a lot of sense to me. I think the definition of, of everything laid out more clearly would naturally tend to make people wanna slow down because honestly, I don't ever see enough law enforcement ever being available to make the people slow down. People are just, that's, that's the life that people drive that way everywhere, not just this community, every, everywhere you look. And, and that's the attitude of today's driver, honestly. I just don't see that, oh, we gotta demand more law enforcement or Vtrans to do something or slow down signs. I don't think any of that's gonna amount to anything other than I feel that if we, if we do something like put the sidewalks in and start building, or put the crosswalks in and then start building sidewalks, and that's a lofty undertaking and I don't know that we have it budgeted right now, but if we could just say every year we're gonna spend 100,000 on sidewalks or something, you know? If we can get grants, so we only gotta come up with 20,000 or, you know? But to look at, to match, to match 20% of a 500,000 grant is, is out of our league, so...
Not necessarily this year because we could use the ARPA funds for it.
Okay.
So, I mean...
But still, it's...
Long-term, we can't do that much every year.
Right.
But we did get 400,000 and we haven't really committed, I mean, we'd like to use a big chunk of that for the wastewater.
Right.
But with the new rules that they have now, which are more broad for the ARPA funds, we could use 100,000 of that for the 20% match for a half million grant, if we wanted to, right? I guess my thought on it is, and I, did someone online have their hand up?
Yeah, but go ahead. Frank, when you're, Frank, there's, Jessica's speaking, but the board is aware you have your hand up.
I guess my thought on it is what we're really voting on right now is which of the proposals to have them draw up in full, right? To have Nicole and that company draw up in full. Because whatever we pursue with this grant this year will probably look the same whether we pick two or three. And what we, each year, we're gonna have to then make another decision about how much money to spend and what grants to pursue. So I don't see any reason not to have them draw up the plan initially for the number three. Because that way, I mean, we've already got this grant for them to draw up the plans. Why don't they draw up the most ambitious plan? And then if we find out next year that we can't do all of that plan, we still got the plan. Maybe a couple years down the line, there'll be a big grant again and we can get more money, you know? That's my thought. That's my bid.
Yeah, what's, and, and I, I agree with that line of thinking, and she said the same thing, that, I mean, once you lay that out, I mean, you draw the plan to do the sidewalks, it's not really gonna be, you guys are both in the business, there's not really gonna be much deviation from that whether we do it this year or we do 100 feet of sidewalk for the next 10 years. It's still the same, there's really no more, no more plans to make about it. And due to the layout of the property and the roads and the houses, it's not like there's any chance for much deviation either. So to me, it would seem like, I would also agree to go for the, have it completely drawn up and then we'll determine how much we can go in a, in a timely, you know, in a reasonable fashion. Frank?
You know...
Oh, John?
One thing I'd like to point out, and Harley was at the meeting with me. The, there is money out there from another, I think it's another department or another division of the Highway Department of pedestrian and bikes. Did you...
Bike and Ped, this is the Bike and Ped program.
Oh, that is, that is from that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's where it came from.
Yeah, that is the bicycle and pedestrian grant.
Oh, I did.
Is the one due June 8th.
Okay, so we're good, alright.
Frank's got his hand up? Did you see someone out their hand?
Yeah, I...
Go ahead, Frank.
Can you hear me?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think that you, so far Mike and Jessica, you're spot on. Even if you went with a minimal 1.2, whatever it is, and you're looking at 20%, like for example, those flashing signs, I think that's, all qualifies under ARPA anyways, cause we were gonna buy two more. Probably, hopefully like the ones exactly like West Pollock, Pollock had now, so that there's two in each ends of town. So that could be probably ARPA, which may slice down the amount a bit further. I don't know if it gets put out the bid, it would be 1.25. Or if somebody local comes in and is real competitive bidding, put the sidewalk part of it in and the crosswalk. So I, it might even go to 1.25 on that section. And if you wanted to extend it year by year, you know, that would have to come through another grant process possibly. Otherwise, it's Proposal 3, which was discussed, which is a larger amount of money than if you only, if 80% is paid for and you're only paying 20%, then if you amortize that out over a number of years, it's far cheaper because the larger portion is being paid for through the grant. So no matter what, slowing the traffic down, sidewalks, as Mike said, and all that, that all makes sense. I think you guys just have to really decide what amount did you feel comfortable throwing the dice at and go with it. Thank you.
So we could get the design, the design work for the, the big project will all still fit under the amount of money we have a lot to, to spend on this project?
It sounds like it.
I think so.
I mean, that's what, we had the grant for them to draw up the plans, right? And they have to do that one way or the other, so. She didn't say anything at the meeting about, about what, it sounded like whichever one we went with, they would draw up the more detailed plans for that.
Harley?
All the engineering plans for the sidewalks?
No, not the engineering plans. This is the, yeah, it's the like sort of large scale, like bird's eye view.
Oh, so it's more like conceptual drawings for everything, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I understand you correctly, have that done for the, the full sidewalk is the smart thing to do now. And even if it's a larger chunk of that initial $500,000 investment, it's paid for. And then take your time on the actual buildup.
Right. We could start and add on because starting and stopping sidewalks is no effect on the overall outcome.
Just something that I perked my ears up during the meeting, just as a viewer, was that, so the, the upkeep of the sidewalk is the responsibility of the town. So I just think that that's something to keep in mind because I've seen in other little cities with more robust sidewalks, you know, that involves a smaller plow type of a situation and that requires somebody to be accessible and available to plow the sidewalks, obviously.
Now, does Mr. Levitt have a little like? I mean, you said he does it for the school, right? Does he have like a little, a little bobcat or something that he uses?
Some of these guys...
I believe that you're absolutely correct that it would make sense for us to contract the maintenance of...
Yeah, it's just something else to consider.
Of a small amount of sidewalk as opposed to try and come up with a piece of specialized equipment to do it.
It's because like the, I don't know when the sidewalks that are currently, the little bit of spit of sidewalks that we currently have, I don't know when those were put in and I don't know what the, what the deal was with those with maintenance, but it's just something, I try to look at all sides of the situation. It's just something to consider is that we do currently have some sidewalks that, you know, haven't been maintained and so now they're not very effective. So I just feel like that's something we should be aware of as a town to recognize, okay, if we're gonna spend the money and do this, then we wanna make sure that we treat them well and keep up with them so that in 10 years, like if we'd put the first bit of sidewalk in and then 10 years later we're adding more that the first bit isn't, you know, in sorry shape. So, just, that was just a thought that I...
So basically tonight we have, we have one of three options to choose, none of which requires us spending any money that we, that we haven't already spent. Because it's all, we're all paying Fussin' O'Neal and we got the, we got a grant for this engineering study. So we're not, tonight's, tonight's decision does, we're not spending any money actually that we haven't already planned on.
The only, the only thing I guess I would add is that if we do choose Option 2 or 3, then we're, we also should probably authorize Devin to go ahead and start working on this grant.
Right.
And we probably should talk to him about what, how big the grant is gonna be. Because we have to do the 20% match.
We'll have to, we'll have to set a, a max on the grant so that we...
We might not have to do that tonight though.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
John, do you have any?
No, I think I agree with what Jessica said.
Okay. Bobby, what do you?
No, I agree.
You know, well, I'll just go ahead and make a motion then that we accept Option 3.
Right.
And, and let Devin know about that and ask him to start going ahead with writing the grant for the first part. I mean, I don't know if that all has to be in the motion, but. Option 3.
So we should select Option 3 and then we should have a motion to have authorized Devin to do that in a separate motion, probably, huh? Makes it a little bit cleaner.
Okay, sure, so I'll just do the Option 3 motion.
Do you have a second for that? John will second it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Any post? Carried. So now...
Hold on. So just to clarify, so this motion is to select Alternative 3 as presented by Fussin' O'Neal, authorizing them to move forward with drawing up the plan so long as that is still included under our grant funding.
Right, without, without exceeding the, the grant cap, I guess is the...
So with drafting...
Cause we don't want them to say, well, it's gonna cost, you know, more money to do that, so we don't, we don't need that action.
Okay. So, so the correct, the correct verbiage would be authorizing them to move forward with drafting the plan so long as those services are included in previously awarded grant funding? Does that sound like it covers the basis? Okay.
That sounds like it, it makes, makes sense.
I, yeah, I would imagine that it all does and that this is part of it, but I just wanna make sure that we are...
They kinda knew what they had to spend when they came into the job, so...
Yeah.
Do you think we need a second motion to authorize Devin to go ahead and write the grant?
I think so, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so I'll make that motion separately. Now we'll authorize Devin Neary from Rutland Regional Planning Commission to go ahead and apply for the, start the application process for the pedestrian and bicycle grant. See if I have the Bike and Ped Program grant.
Bike and pedestrian grant.
And I imagine that what exactly he writes for that will have to do with, he'll have to talk to Fussin' O'Neal, they'll have to talk to us.
Yes.
There is time between now and June 8th for us to hash out the details on that.
So you made that motion?
I made... I made that motion.
Devin second on, John will second that motion that Devin starts working on the grant. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Ah, yeah, we did that.
Good.
That's exciting.
Excellent.
I'm just so glad Devin's going to write that grant.
Yeah, me too. I'm like, we gotta do it. Somebody's volunteering to write it.
If he can survive being a Rutland alderman, he's got to be a man friend.
Right?
Oh, I didn't know he's, is he a Rutland alderman right now?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. More power to him. Mm-hmm.
All right.
Uh, I guess this is kind of, I don't even know. Is there anything else under older unfinished business?
Oh, um, so actually you holding this up just jogged my memory. So I, um, went ahead, it took me several attempts to alert the state that the select board had in fact established a local commission, um, for the can- for the local cannabis control commission. Um, so I put in an email and I put in a phone call and then I got an email back from one of the three individuals who's kind of working in that office. And they told me to send an email to someone else, so I did. And they wrote me back saying, did you fill out the form, you know, your intention form? And I said, we didn't fill out any form. I didn't know we needed a form. If you want to send it to me, we can fill it out. But then I sent the motion along and they said, oh, that's great. We'll put that on file. We need a contact person. And I provided the select board email address and your name, Mike, um, as the chair.
Thank you. You're awesome.
And you can send everything to me, but, um, address it to Mike Beecher. He is the chair. So it seems as though, and I asked on behalf of the board if there was any sort of, you know, contact group or any other municipalities that have embarked on this that we can be in touch with or like a contact list, and they said, that's a great idea. So they basically said that they are like rapidly make, you know, establishing things as they go. So I think that we're probably in the forefront of local commissions, so we're blazing the trail. Um, so anyway, but we are officially on the books with the state.
So what I'm looking at is I'm wondering if anybody has an opportunity to attend this webinar, so.
I'll look at my calendar and see if I have the opportunity to attend it. I might be out of town that day, but I'll, I'll check when I get
Okay. Because I think we get a very reduced rate and we could get to it and I
Could be beneficial. Striving for authority. Um, I guess they are continuing to update the, the website all the time as they continue to evolve, so.
Any new business? Nothing? Everything's running smooth? Is there any public comment?
Uh, Frank has his hand raised.
Frank's got something?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Frank.
Just as an FYI on the cannabis issue, is, um, I was speaking to a source because I wondered who had purchased the old Bramble Bank, first national bank on the corner that was, that they vacated. Uh, and apparently, I was told that the fellow who bought it is in the cannabis business in downstate New York. And New York's going forward with Fossa with legalizing the sale. And that this fellow has intentions of turning this bank building into a cannabis sales outlet. He has the vaults downstairs and all sorts of stuff that he apparently liked. And so they're more than likely, if all that goes through New York State, is going to be a, uh, more than likely a cannabis distribution or sales facility.
Thank you.
You too.
Anything else?
Nope.
Somebody want to, uh, make the last motion of the night? John looks like he is. He's up for it. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you all for coming, everyone. Have a good evening.
Yeah.